Good evening. This regular meeting of December 10th, 2018 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners -- excuse me -- and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton.
Here.
Ms. Bradley. Mr. Donahue. Mr. Prohaska.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Sancy.
Here.
Ms. Whitman.
Here.
Excuse me. We have with us this evening students from Washington Middle School to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on forward.
Hi, I'm Sarah and this is George, Washington Middle School Student Council, and we're here to lead the pledge for you today.
I'm Josie.
I'm Alex.
I'm Sam.
I'm Will.
I'm Soren.
I'm Madeline.
I'm Quinn.
I'm Charlotte.
I'm Maya.
I'm Sanvi.
I'm AJ.
And I'm Kyla.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on November 12th, 2018 as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on November 12th, 2018 as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. All right, we have a couple of board salutes. Mr. Prohaska.
Yeah, I have a board salute that goes out to the anonymous donors who provided over $700 to pay for student library fines at Jefferson Middle School in memory of Molly Tibbetts. This generous gift will allow for the school to purchase new books to maintain a variety of reading choices in the library.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Bradley.
I have a board salute going to all those who were involved with developing and now implementing the standards-based progress report at the elementary level in the district. Last year it was piloted in all schools, this year it has gone district-wide. And the progress report, or report card as we call it, and the assessment materials were designed over a considerable length of time with many, many people involved. And it involved teachers, curriculum staff, technology staff, communications staff. It really was a team effort from the beginning to now as it's being implemented. So, the intention, of course, is to have -- to take the identified state standards and learning targets for our students and to have common assessments that were developed by our teachers and to apply them as grade-level learning goals to better inform teachers diagnostically about each child's learning, where he or she needs to be challenged and where they have gained mastery, and to help parents have a 24/7 availability of information about their children's learning. So, just a special thanks for all of the effort that's gone into it, getting us to this point. It's not a perfect system, but we think that it's one that will help with our students' learning, so we're excited about that.
I agree. Thank you. Any other board salutes?
I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. To start with this evening, we have a lion's energy here. Craig Clefis is here to give us a check, I believe. You want to come up and --
Bill, you can help introduce and tell us in the background.
I don't think we will. Not when we're gonna get money.
Getting new board members, I'd like to introduce Craig Clefis. He's our alliance representative, and he's got some exciting news from the senior renovation. There's something I also wanted to share with you. This is the guy who responds on 24/7 when we have power outages and issues with all our schools. This is the guy we get ahold of right away. And he does a very good job of getting back to us so the superintendent can make decisions based on how long that outage is gonna be.
Great.
We really appreciate this guy's partnership.
Well, anyway, I will thank you very much, as Bill said, my name's Craig Clefis, and for the opportunity to come in front of the superintendent and the school board tonight and what you guys approved and what you did to the senior high school on the addition and renovation. By doing all the energy efficiency implementation upfront, it's gonna benefit the school district going forward as time goes with that school building. But as far as part of doing the implementation of energy efficiencies, that what happens and what's the best part of my job is coming in front of the school district and awarding the Dubuque Community School District a check in the amount of $52,927. So, I think it's a great deal what you guys done, being energy efficient. I'm sure the students look at it that way, too. You know, you go in that building, especially with the open house, you just see right away with the lighting and just a different --
Absolutely. It's fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nope, I'm gonna say I'm behind you. Important people in front.
Your photobomb and photos. I'm not.
Thank you very much. We'll always take a check.
I did bring the actual check, so.
Okay.
I'll take this one to the --
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you very much. If there are any persons wishing to address the board, may do so at this time. Please state your name and either your address or the company you're representing, and try to limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Marilyn Althoff, I'm the CEO at Hills and Dales. After 45 years of positive partnering with the district, I'm really alarmed at the recent action at the district towards kids with autism and disabilities. For years, Hills and Dales has provided applied behavior analysis therapy on-site through a contract agreement to be at school to deliver our services. This contract never stated that the district offered these ABA therapy services, and a recent bulletin stating such put out by the district director is faulty and misleading. ABA therapy by Iowa laws prescribed by a physician medically authorized and delivered by credentialed and certified therapists. On September 25th, the district approached Hills and Dales and stated that they would discontinue our contract, and they were issuing an RFP contract for this service, and we would receive that RFP. We responded and provided the district with detailed concerns and problems with their plan. After a lack of response from the district on the RFP, we proceeded to end our contract and move ABA to our clinic. It was then identified that the district was doing their own therapy. We maintain that the district cannot provide medically prescribed physician authorized ABA therapy. To inform parents that the district will offer the same ABA therapy as Hills and Dales is not true. Since then, we have been inundated with parent contacts and threats to our residents at Hills and Dales as well to transition to the district ABA service or be charged with unexcused absences, truancy, and demands for immediate IEP changes or requirements to dual enroll and homeschool. Our concerns are validated in the documents that we have, which include emails from the district staff and a lack of consistent and concise answers to questions about this therapy plan from the district staff. The district's attendance policy states that professional appointments are considered excused. However, Hills and Dales and parents have been given several interpretations of that policy. We are also aware, out-of-school therapy, other students go to out-of-school therapy or other professional appointments, and they're not labeled as unexcused or truant. To project upon a student, caretaker, and/or a parent that these appointments will be considered this way, in our opinion, is targeting a specific group and pre-planning an action towards them. I want to remind the board that our center, Hills and Dales, is a healthcare facility funded by Medicaid, and it would be illegal for us to take a dual enrollment for children and use Medicaid money to homeschool. It seems to us that the district actions are targeting kids with autism and who also receive our ABA therapy services. We feel we have an obligation to assure these kids are not denied access to their medical treatments, and we plan to continue to pursue all avenues to protect their basic expectations. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Laura Keener, 119 Silvestre Road, Bernard. As Autism Services Director for Hills and Dales, first I'd like to say the school teams we've had the opportunity to collaborate with have been great. However, there has been a consistent pattern from the district and AEA special ed directors to state that the district has been and is responsible for providing ABA services. Let me make this clear, ABA is not an educational service listed on an IEP. It never has been, nor should it be. The ABA services provided within the school environment have always been a medically prescribed treatment, one in which Hills and Dales is qualified to provide. Yet, district and AEA directors both ask that we hand over medical treatment goals and plans that have been authorized by physicians for Hills and Dales to deliver, not the district or AEA. Applied behavior analysis is a science nationally known as the gold standard in treatment methods for individuals with autism. It is a medically prescribed treatment only. It is based on analysis of behavior and requires development of a treatment plan by a BCBA, not an IEP team. Rushing parents into signing amendments to add ABA as a school service does not appear to follow the IEP process of reevaluation. Threatening parents to sign documents or have their child's absence for a medical treatment be counted as unexcused is wrong, in my opinion. University of Iowa Autism Director, National Behavior Analysis Board, and Ethics Panel Members have confirmed the significant challenges that occur should anyone attempt to alter the profession of behavior analysis in this method. There is no educational model, and anyone involved in altering the profession in that manner would be subject to sanctions on their certification. Shirley Horstman informed families, the district and AEA, that the district and AEA would be billing the students Medicaid for their proposed ABA services. They will bill using paraprofessional Medicaid codes but will label it ABA services and an IEP. You cannot bill Medicaid this way. This has been confirmed by Medicaid billing professionals, including case managers for State of Iowa MCOs and Medicaid billing professionals at the federal level. Billing any funding source, including Medicaid, and misrepresenting the code is potential fraud. This may compromise the student's ability to use their Medicaid or private insurance for the medical services they were intended for. We have attempted to work with the district at every step along the way to preserve students' rights to access their medically prescribed ABA treatment and support the district. We cannot endorse or participate in a questionable at best, fraudulent at worst, service the district is planning to deliver. Not only have the families received the above inaccurate information, but so have the school teams. Hills and Dales will move forward and continue to ensure that children with autism have access to the medically prescribed treatments they have the right to. We will continue to provide behavior analysis that upholds the delivery standards of the profession.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Allison Byteam, 1235 Arrowhead Drive, Dubuque. I work as a board-certified behavior analyst for Hills and Dales. I live as a parent and an advocate for individuals with autism. The decision by Dubuque Community School District to provide applied behavior analysis treatment to a select number of students has been fraught with misinformation, inadequate planning, and potentially discriminatory treatment to a vulnerable population. I would like to inform the board of the legal ramifications in this process. Two acronyms are critical in the world of special education. IDEA, Individual with Disabilities Education Act, and IEP, Individualized Education Plan. Now, the most important letter in these acronyms is the "I." It stands for individualized. Federal and state law require that special education plans be written that reflect the needs of the individual student. DCSD is potentially violating IDEA law in the following areas. One, in my professional experience, any district changing the whole district-wide IEP services for a particular population is illegal. It is considered targeting. Two, IEPs are being changed unilaterally for this population. This is a violation of the individualization of treatment plans. Two -- or three, sorry, requiring all parents to homeschool their children. If parents choose a medical treatment, violates the legal requirement for individualization. Parents are being informed that they are, and I quote, "required" to dual enroll for homeschool, but the local AEA director will make that final approval. This statement appears to violate the IDEA rule of parent rights to choose how their child receives a medically necessary treatment. If Dubuque Community School District believes that the provision of ABA treatment is a school district requirement, and you've heard my colleagues question that in its entirety, but if they believe that, then IEPs should need to be changed for all students who have autism, not just those who have chosen to be clients of Hills and Dales. For the past four years, provision of medically necessary ABA treatment has been considered a linkage on the IEP to an outside service and as general education minutes. IEP meetings since September 25th have occurred without any discussion of changing that service plan. IEP documents presented in recent days state that ABA services were discussed in those IEP meetings. This could be considered falsification of documents and a direct violation of IDEA. For one student, services are listed as being provided by a, quote, "generic provider," which is an illegal title and a violation of IDEA, in my opinion. IEP meetings have been held in the past two weeks with over 15 people in attendance, sometimes lasting more than two hours and without any resolution. In my professional experience, that's a pretty unusual circumstance for any IEP, let alone an IEP amendment, and could be interpreted as intimidation and bullying by a school district. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any board members wishing to have any items removed? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. All right, that takes us to our Facilities and Support Services report. Mr. Barton.
Pinch-hitting in Facilities and Support Services. Okay, we've got a few motions here to get through. I move that the Board of Education receive and approve the June 30th, 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and approve the June 30th, 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Is there any discussion? Mr. Kelleher.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Ryan Gans. Tonight, we are asking you to approve the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2018. I'm gonna talk a little bit about what's in the CAFER so the taxpayers understand what the document is and the information that relates to it. The CAFER is really broken into four sections. There's an introductory section, financial, statistical, and compliance section. And I'll mention three different areas that I think is important for our viewers to read if they have an opportunity. Starting with the introductory section, which is pages five through 16 of the document, it really explains what the CAFER is, what it reports, information about the district. It also provides specific information about our district, so like our certified enrollment numbers and history, et cetera. I also want to talk about it includes a report on our key financial targets and goals for the general fund that is embedded in our strategic plan, so that is reported in here as well. It also includes the district certificate of excellence in financial reporting for last year's CAFER. That's all in the introductory section. Financial section includes the independent auditor's report, and as you know from the subcommittee meeting we had, the auditor issued a clean opinion, unmodified opinion, otherwise known as a clean opinion, which is the best opinion that they can offer for our district. It means our financial statements are represented fairly and accurately for the year. Next piece is of part of the financial is the management discussion and analysis, and that's part of the -- one of the things I think our viewers should take a look at and read that. It provides a written story of what all the numbers are in the document, all the schedules, the financial information. It kind of provides a narrative for that, so it's important to read that. It includes the financial highlights for 2018 as well. And lastly, it includes economic factors that are coming up that will bear, you know, have influence on both this year and future years, so it talks about that. The next section is the statistical section, and that includes tables for a 10-year history of different financial facts on the district. It has 23 total tables in that area, and that includes things like what our enrollment has been, what our levy rate has been, you know, who are the 10 largest taxpayers in the district, things like that. So, it's got a history for 10 years of that information. And finally is the compliance section, which again, I think our viewers should read that. It includes three main pieces. One is an auditor's report on our internal controls, and so you know there was no findings this year on that. It also includes a report on our compliance with major federal programs, and again, the auditor had no findings in that area. And then the final piece of that compliance section is called the Schedule of Findings and Questions and Costs. And the auditor has some statutory comments that he has to make, and he also lists any other findings in there. And there were no other findings, but there was one finding on our schedule of supplementary weighting. When we uploaded the data originally in the fall, it did have a misclassification of some high school classes that we actually get additional weighting for because they're college-eligible credit classes, so they weren't listed properly in the upload. And then when the upload went again in the summer for the final of the year, they were reclassified into the correct codes for those courses. So, that's how the state knew that we had shorted ourselves two and a half FTEs was what that supplementary weighting amount was. So, that was the one finding. We've also taken action to correct that. Once we knew that back in October, we figured that out, and the high schools have implemented a procedure to rectify that in the future. Any questions on the document or for anything else in it?
In my four terms, I can't recall a cleaner audit than the one that we just had. It was just great to see.
Thank you, Tom. I do want to also reflect the importance of our department, specifically Rick Hill and Joan Stephan, who put numerous hours into this multi-page document. I couldn't do it without them, and they're very, very good.
Yes, they are.
I guess I would just chime in that, you know, we, over the past, I guess I've been here 15 years, got used to the fact that this is the outcome of our audits. You don't have to go much past the Des Moines Register to see that that's the case in every district. And so Kevin has seen do a fantastic job, and whether the news is good or bad, we always know it's accurate and above board, so we appreciate the work that you and your whole team do.
Well, thank you very much.
Job well done. Thank you.
And this will be, if subject to your approval, it'll be on the website this week, so viewers can look for it then.
Go through and read it till their little hearts are content.
That's right. If you're CPA, you will love it.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the supplement to agreement for services with TerraCon Consultants, Inc. for the AltaVista Alternative Learning Center addition project in the additional amount of $7,748.25.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the supplement to agreement for services with TerraCon Consultants, Inc. for the AltaVista Alternative Learning Center addition project in the amount -- additional amount of $7,748.25. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Eisenhower School Mechanical Replacement Project and set the date, time, and location as March 11th, 2019 at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum 2300 Chaney Road, Dubuque, Iowa for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Eisenhower School Mechanical Replacement Project and set the date, time, and location as March 11th, 2019 at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum 2300 Chaney Road, Dubuque, Iowa for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Fulton School Roof Replacement Project and set the date, time, and location as March 11th, 2019 at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum 2300 Chaney Road, Dubuque, Iowa for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Fulton School Roof Replacement Project and set the date, time, and location as March 11th, 2019 at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum 2300 Chaney Road, Dubuque, Iowa for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 10-year facility plan as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the 10-year facility plan as submitted. Is there any discussion? Do we wanna --
You know, it'd be a lot more exciting if we had some money to fund it from the extension of the one cent sales tax, but it's, you know, it's kind of the same old plan that we've had going forward, depending upon funds that become available. That would occur from either an extension of the one cent tax so we can bond against that, or extra dollars that are collected that exceed how much we've planned for already, then we'd be able to fund some things. And some of the items on the list can, you know, continue to be the same old things, such as possibly if we need to have a new elementary school at some point because of population growth, or renovations particularly at Wash and Jeff that we've looked at for years. You know, and then there's other -- each school has a line item where there's, you know, a variety of things that can be done at each school, but, you know, we essentially need to stay within the guidelines of the law when it comes to funding that building plan. So, right now, it's kind of a hurry up and wait situation.
Well, the rumor is kind of in Des Moines that they're going to be doing something this year, but we've heard that for the last couple of years, so.
I've heard that for six years.
I guess it's a wait-and-see cooperation.
I'll believe it when I see it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2018-2019 Additional Cash Enhancement and Reducing the Required Years of Service to the Existing Early Retirement Policy, Policy 4308, for teachers, nurses, and counselors.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the 2018-2019 Additional Cash Enhancement and Reducing the Required Years of Service to the Existing Early Retirement Policy, 4308, for teachers, nurses, and counselors. And discussion? Do we want --
Phil, do you just want to give kind of a synopsis prior to discussion?
Explain what we're doing.
Okay. Please, board, Mr. Ryan Gans. So, there has to be a particular alignment of all the stars in so this scenario, but every so often, we look at ways that we can save dollars for the district, and we look at a variety of things. When we look at the early retirement policy we have for teachers, we look at potentially also saving additional dollars down the road. So, the stars that need to be aligned are -- So the stars that need to be aligned are, number one, are we in a situation that we need to reduce our staff costs? The answer to that is yes, we are in a year. We know that we've survived one 1.1% SSA from the state. Our settlements in terms of contracts have been two, two and a half. That's going to catch up, so our trajectory of going into our unspent balance keeps going down. So we look for ways, how are we going to level that off, get that to go back up? One of the ways that we look at doing that is through teachers, because the difference between a veteran teacher and a teacher in their first five years of experience is pretty significant in the dollar amount of expenses. An example of that would be a teacher who is retiring at the end of this year that I just picked out of the group. The total all costs for the district with salary and benefits is about $82,000, a little more than $82,000 a year. A new teacher with benefits is about $48,000 a year, so right within that, you've got about a $30,000 savings. So looking at that, not looking at people, looking at numbers now, mind you, that there's a significant amount of savings that can be had in reducing our costs if our people who are at the upper end do decide to resign and retire. We offer a regular retirement policy every year, the standard that's there. When our management fund is healthy, because all of our retirement expenses are paid through our management fund, when our management fund is healthy, when we need to reduce, to save money and also to save jobs in the end, because we're going to have to figure out how to reduce some of our positions, when those are all aligned, then we look at what kinds of people do we have that are potentially ready to retire. The current policy says that you have to be 55 years old, and you have to have been in the district for 20 years, all right? That pool of people right now is about, is right at about 60 people, okay? So of that, not sure how many retire because you're getting down into the lower age. If you reduce the number of years required in the district from 20 to 15, you increase that pool to a little bit over 100 potential. So what we want to do, or would like to do, is if we can get a substantial number of people to retire, then through attrition, we don't have to cut people in April, and we're giving a benefit to those people who are, who are close to that. Usually what it does, it means that people who are thinking maybe of retiring a year from now might think more now. The enhancement that we're offering is basically an additional cash. Currently, the percentages are based upon your age, 30% one-time cash payout of your, of your base salary, one-time payout if you're 60, goes down to 25 if you're 59, 20 if you're 58, and so on down to 55. The enhancement we are bringing to you would add 30% to all of those positions. So somebody who's 60 years or older would receive 60% of their base salary in a one-time cash payout. And then all the other positions, you would add that additional 30%, all right? With that, in my estimation, if we can get, you know, 30, 30-plus people to potentially retire, and if we can not replace five or six positions through attrition, you're looking at a half a million dollars of savings there. And if you replace another 25 or so positions from that, you're looking at another substantial, maybe $700,000, $750,000. The goal would be if we could save somewhere between $750,000 and $1 million, just by doing the enhanced incentive is going to save us in the end when it, when it comes to not having to reduce staff and cutting our budget back a little bit. I caution everyone, though, that, that for me, it's really hard sometimes to look at this as just numbers and not, and not people. So I say that from my heart. We're not trying to push people out. That is not the goal. We have wonderful people. We're just, if the people are close to that, and if they can go a year, maybe two earlier, then this is a benefit to them, and it also benefits us because in the end, we won't have to cut somebody who we just hired and have invested in and, and force them to look other places for a job. So that's kind of a long story for a part. Any questions, any things related to that?
I'd add one piece. So the goal is we're going to spend some money to save a significant amount of money, but it also comes down to class and staff size. If, with the numbers Phil shared with you, the far more senior folks who are going to retire in the next two or three, four years retire, if they don't, and we have to go to the layoff, we lay off based on least senior, which, as he laid out, costs us far less. And so we have to lay off, instead of, you know, having 30 people who retire, we would have to lay off significantly more to get to the same dollar amount. So it does impact class size and those sorts of things. So it is a win-win in the sense that, again, we lose great people. I get that, and that's, you know, but we're not asking somebody who retire, who's not wanting to retire, but making it available, so.
Well, it becomes a teacher's choice, staff's choice, as opposed to us coming through and saying these jobs are eliminated. And it's not, it's not something that we like to look at doing, because it's, we are losing, so to speak, good teachers who are choosing to step out of the profession, maybe earlier than what we want, and we know we value the experience in the classroom, but we cannot continue going down the same path that we see other districts doing who don't do this and end up in a financial situation that gets them in trouble. And because we foresee all of these situations coming towards us, and I know Kevin and Phil, you look at stuff and give us these only when we have to do it, and I would much rather offer it this end than the other way, which was done about, what, eight years ago? We laid off a bunch of teachers, probably a little bit more than that. So, you know, I, it's hard to do this, but yet I think it's positive in the long run. It does, you know, help the district, and it's a choice for the teachers to make. We're not necessarily forcing it, which I think is good.
I'd just like to chime in. It's kind of a bittersweet thing, retirement, we're losing our highly qualified, experienced staff, and we want to offer the incentive, and the incentive as far as the extra 30% I think is great. I had a question, though, regarding the insurance, and I kind of mentioned this earlier. It's kind of been stagnant over the last few years, and was that, does that come out of the management fund as well?
Yes, that would.
That would come out?
Yes.
Do you think that there'd be any additional incentive by increasing that, being that the word I have heard, that a lot of teachers are not retiring often because of the health insurance situation?
Well, and my answer to that would be is that's why we offer the additional 30% is so that if I, if you're a person out there that's thinking, I've got a year, maybe two, and then I can retire, that that extra cash is going to be something that you could use for that additional insurance cost that you would have to contribute above and beyond what the district provides, rather than, you know, let it, let them decide what they want to do with that cash versus us making that decision. That's kind of, that's just my justification. I know there's some disagreement with that.
I think the last time, 2016?
About five. Five years ago.
No, I'm asking about the insurance. The insurance, I think.
That was about five years ago.
2016.
It was 2016.
Oh, 2016.
That we, that.
Adjusted that.
Adjusted that slightly.
Because we knew that would probably come up, so we looked, we looked that up today. I'm pretty sure it was 2016.
My concern, I speak strongly in favor of what you propose. I won't be able to vote for it in favor of it tonight for one specific element of the proposal, and it's the one that has been done this way in the past, so it's not new practice, but it's one that I believe is something that bears the Board's review, if not tonight, then certainly going forward. Clearly, we lose expertise. Clearly, we gain cost savings by doing what you bring to us as a proposal. I support that. What I cannot support is the continued double plan of distribution of the insurance benefit that goes at retirement. It's the same one that goes during the time of the person's employment, but it is a lesser amount for a single insurance plan employee than for a family insurance plan employee, a considerable difference. It comes to about, your proposal would be about $1,800 difference to the person taking the family plan upon retirement than it would be for the person taking the single. Therefore, the district invests in that employee $1,800 per year less because they take a single plan. I believe that that's an unfair practice, and it's something I've given voice to for many years before I came to the Board, and I believe that it's something that this Board should really take a look at. I think that we have an ethical obligation to find inequitable practices when they exist. My opinion is that this is an inequitable practice, and so I want to be clear to our teachers, counselors, and nurses that I in no way am in, in anything but total favor of the enhanced incentive package, but I cannot support that kind of disparity for no reason. In employment, it's a disparity that exists. Now, now we go forward with yet another retirement incentive system that would again repeat that disparity. My mother was a one-room country school teacher, and she was the first person in the county, I believe, if my mother was telling the truth, which she was.
We'll take her word.
You had to know my mother, to say, no, I won't resign from teaching because I got married. Okay. I believe it was in 1974 when one of our brave teachers said, I'm going to be the first one to say no to retiring because it's expected that when I become pregnant, I would resign from teaching. Those were clearly discriminatory practices. They were unfair. And bravo to my mother, to the person who stood up in 1974. This in many ways, as an equity issue, feels exactly like that to me. Why would we have two different levels of compensation? Because of a person's essentially marital status. Why? Because we've always done it that way. And so I challenge us as a Board to really look at that practice going forward with an eye towards fairness. And I believe that the, an obvious solution to that is some businesses who have cafeteria plans, some school districts have cafeteria plans, then there's one amount of benefit that's provided to all employees, whether it's used all up in insurance or whether it's spread among other options within that cafeteria plan. It's one amount for all. That, to me, is fair. So my vote against this is in no way a vote against the enhanced retirement incentive package.
And I totally respect that, Nancy, and I do understand you and I have had lots of.
We've had many of those.
Talk conversations about that. I would just like to say, though, that in this proposal, the insurance isn't a part of that change, and I think that you're, what you're relating to is really the Policy 4308, which has been a standing policy. This particular, the recommendation is strictly just the enhanced incentive. It doesn't change what was already in existence with the insurance, so just to clarify.
Sure.
But I certainly understand and respect your thoughts and opinions on that.
Just to be clear, Policy 4308 does not, as you and I have discussed, does not expect or compel the district to distribute two different levels of compensate or benefit in the insurance, either during employment or in the case of 4308.
I guess I would change, for the during employment, that's been negotiated. So with the union, the union has negotiated, the district pays 100% for single and 75% for family. So there's a slight, just point that out.
Good point.
The history of that has been collective bargaining.
Sure. That not so in the case, if I'm correct.
Not, not.
About retirement, which is what we're about here, so.
Right, right. And, and while the policy is very short in terms of the policy, it's only a couple of sentences, and the rest are the administrative guidelines, and I think the insurance allotment has kind of, it was kind of put out there, and it's just kind of been our past practice and what we've been offering people and what people have planned on. So I think that that is obviously good for discussion, you know, down the road. Right now, I'm not asking you to open up that whole policy again, but just, you know, consider this to, for the purposes of, of, you know, saving some dollars by spending some dollars, it's the obvious thing, so.
Sure.
I would chime in, just to get back to the notion of cost savings. I don't know, because we have been successful at dealing with the financial challenges that we've had, I don't know if the community necessarily appreciates, and I'm not saying that they, they're doing anything wrong, but I don't know if they can appreciate just how treacherous the last several years have been from a school financing standpoint. I mean, we've had years where we have gotten hardly any new money at all, and that's really, really tough on an organization trying to make ends meet. And like corporate America, Fortune 500 companies, 80% of their entire budget is oftentimes salary and benefits. That's, I mean, what else do you spend money on? So the same is true for the school district. It's always about 80% salary and benefits. So if you want to really go at the heart of the budget, you have to look at salary and benefits. And you don't have to look very far to see other school districts, just, you know, case in point, 70 miles south of here in Davenport, where things are really, really tough, but we have, we have been in a position because of good financial decisions, and good financial decisions in previous years, too, that we've had a surplus to work with a little bit. But, you know, we haven't had to cut programs for kids. We've cut a handful of things here and there, but really, the average student has not really seen much of a difference in the educational program. Our fear continues to be that if we keep going forward without some kind of meaningful increase in funding, kids are going to really start to feel that at some point, and in some districts, they already are. But we have worked tirelessly to make sure that the brunt of the impact of the difficult financial funding environment that we're in, and it goes back to Des Moines and what they choose to support education with, that, that we have done all we can to make sure that the, that the student is not affected by that kind of stuff. We've cut in lots of ways that have not necessarily been right in front of the kid, and at some point, we're going to run out of, we're going to run out of little corners that we can shave off as we try and continue to, to meet those needs. But I really appreciate the administration and the work that you all have done over the last several years to keep our fat out of the fire when it comes to finances, you know. They, they always say when a bear's, we've said it before, when the bear's chasing you in the forest, you don't have to be faster than the bear, you just have to be faster than everybody else that the bear's chasing. And there are a few slower districts than us running through the forest, and at some point, the legislature's going to have to do something when the bear starts catching those districts. So hopefully, we can stay one foot ahead of those districts and eventually get a few extra shekels thrown at us from Des Moines. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can we do have a motion on the floor? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Nay.
That motion does carry with two nays. All right, moving on to new business.
Oh, education.
Oh, education, I'm so sorry. I just turned my motions over. So sorry, Anderson, I did not mean to short you.
No problem at all. So besides a lot of the conversations that the viewers are seeing right now, these are actually a lot of the conversations that we're having behind the scenes, countless of hours either on the phone or email or in board meetings, including the bear conversation. There's countless of hours talking about the bear. One of the things that I do want to point out from our last education meeting is the amount of time that we spent with our Title I teachers, the principals, actually, and they came to our meeting and they provide us information of what's actually going on inside of their world. What are the good things, what are the challenges and the different opportunities to actually meet the student's need? And I believe, and I think we all believe, that it was a powerful meeting, just really connecting with our principals, and we're so thankful for all the hard work that they do every single day to try to do what's best for kids every single day. And I think that's one of the things that, you know, maybe at times, we take for granted of the challenges that each and every single one of our buildings go through every single day, and what they're trying to do every single day to impact students and making sure that they reach their full potential. So we're so thankful for our principals that came, and I know they're real excited to come back and connect with us again. So that's one of the things that I wanted to highlight.
Very good.
Yep.
It's a good one to do. All right.
New business. I move the Board of Education approve the physical education exemption requested, request as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the physical education exemption request as presented. Is there discussion? Is there discussion?
We do this yearly. We changed physical education at the secondary level quite a few years ago, where students do it for a semester on a, on a regular basis as opposed to a more spread-out basis for an entire year. It allows a couple of things. We think students get better habits because they're doing it daily for a period of time. And it also allows them to take one extra class each year, which courses to their benefit as well.
Great. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to students number 804342 and number 819821 and number 816920 and number 814489 at this time.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to students, number 804342, number 819821, number 816920, and number 814489 at this time. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That takes us on to any Board member or administrative issues?
I have two quick administrative issues. One, I didn't want to let slip that in our consent agenda in the personnel report is Phil Kramer's retirement packet. To be really clear, he is not impacted by the early retirement. He's not, you know, advocating for something that's going to benefit him, because he's an administrator, not a teacher. But certainly, Phil has had a fantastic career in education in Western Dubuque, as well as Dubuque-Jefferson here at the Forum. So we'll have a lot of opportunity to celebrate that as we get closer to the end of the school year. And also, we will begin looking for his replacement, probably shortly after the holidays. So I didn't want that to come without mention. Phil's been a fantastic part of our team for quite a long time, and will leave a big hole for us, so I wanted to at least mention that. And then the last one, real quickly, the calendar, as was pointed out by the Telegraph Herald, is available on our website. So it's a two-year calendar. If folks are interested, hop on and give us your thoughts. We've gone through a couple of different focus groups, district leadership, as well as our D-Silt, which is our, sort of our district site council team to get feedback. And made a few adjustments, and looking at a two-year calendar. People don't agree a lot when it comes to calendars. The one thing they do agree on is everybody likes the two-year calendar, so we'll try to do that.
Good.
I think one thing that I would add is a happy holidays to all of you beautiful people. Just, it's been a great year. And as Tom usually says, you know, we can't chase 20 different rabbits out there, right? We got to stay focused on our strategic plan. So when we come back, continue to stay focused on the mission and doing what's best for our students and our teachers. So happy holidays to the viewers out there as well.
Great.
I'd, I'd like to see Gallup measuring the approval rating for our calendars over the years. Now, they measure congressional approval ratings, presidential approval ratings. I'd like to see the calendar approval rating over the years. I think maybe we max out at about 45%, maybe. I mean, you know...
I'm hoping for 51%.
51.
That is such in the eye of the beholder, just different for everyone.
We learned one lesson about 15 years ago, didn't we, Nancy? When you adopt a calendar, don't change it. Don't change it. Big, big, big mistake.
Don't change graduation.
Don't do that. Don't do that.
Anyone else? All right, we are adjourned.